Alright, so um it I am calling the special meeting for the Board of Education July 10th to order. And the first order of business is to talk about that. We just had a lot of summer activities. But before I go into that, what Caitlin is speaking to is Mark and Caitlin are kind of came in because this wasn't. This was just going to be sort of like a very small meeting around our self eval. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone had the same amount of information that I had when it came to summer activities. Because you are, I am only just one of nine. So I I added that. And so they needed to be part of the the recording process. What's going to happen is that we're going to do the first set, which is this to talk about what's going to happen on the summer. Make some some plans and some choices about how we want to handle that. Caitlin is then, as she mentioned, she is actually going to stop. Well, she's going to continue to record until the vote is to go into executive session. And then, once we go into, um, hey, Mark, could you send Phil Piazza the link to tonight's meeting? That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you. And so, um, once that happens and we go into executive session, I become host. And there's no more recording and we go into the separate group. And then, once we're done, we come out of the group, I then have to just adjourn the meeting with people that say, yes, they agree to adjourn the meeting. And then we can all say good night. So that's just to give you the process for tonight. Let's go back to the process for the summer. So, um, in this summer, um, we have, and I think have all of you received Susan's packet of her work on the superintendent goals.
Yeah, it was it was way too lengthy as far as I'm concerned. It it was just over the top.
I don't want to talk about.
Okay, I'm just letting you know I received it, but it's.
Okay, I just, I I.
Format.
I don't want to, I don't want to talk about her, her process.
Oh, so we're not doing the evaluation tonight. I couldn't tell by your agenda. Just the processes tonight?
Yes, because there was a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions, Rita. And I didn't want to make the decision without having full board input about how they, how people wanted to move forward. So if I could, if I could continue, that would be great. So there are, and I have a long time ago sent you guys the leadership from CAEB. It is, it is the superintendent's, the five goals that she has, that she has worked off of. This is going to be her second year. And so, um, we in the past, actually, since I have been and Rita, you probably could speak to this more than I could speak to it. Which is that we've always done a Likert scale for the superintendent. It's been a very different evaluation. I I think every single year, so this is my 12th. Every single year, it's actually been a different evaluation. I don't ever remember doing the same evaluation more than twice. So, but this is also a very different one. We normally do. Hi, Phil, thank you for stepping in for just a second. I'm just talking about the process of the superintendent eval. We're not doing the actual evaluation. I'm just talking about the process.
Okay.
In the past, we have had a Likert scale, the one through five. I don't see where the goals and her responses make a sense for us to do a Likert. My sense was, this is the goal. Did she, did she meet it? Did she not? I also think I sent you her write up, our write up to her last year, which was basically on the board. We had, we really wanted her to think about the board stuff. I sent that to you as well. What I need to hear from the board is, do we, do we want to have this one conversation without using a Likert scale? And two, um, do we want her to be part of the process from the very get go? Or would people like to have the chance to be able to talk about this in an executive session without her? Liz?
I personally would like to do this in an executive session.
Without, it would always be in executive session.
Yeah, but I mean, just us.
Okay, alright.
That's my opinion.
I see.
Yeah, that's what the learning board does also. We have an executive session and then after it's all sort of tallied up, then then she's brought in to the executive committee. So not, not while, not, she's never, you know, never in the room.
Okay, I I agree. And that's, once again, Rita, my history in doing superintendent evaluations is that we've always met in, in whatever. When I was looking through CAEB and when I was looking at through other, everyone does it differently. And so I actually am just trying to sort of make sure that I, we are most in agreement. Andrea, you've raised your hand.
Right, I thought we were going to discuss this in executive session. What we're talking about now. I didn't think.
We're not talking about Susan. We are talking about the process and how we want to do the superintendent evaluation. So it could be Joe Schmo or it could be for Susan. But right now, I'm just asking, do we want a Likert scale? Because you and I, we have not developed a Likert scale. Or how do we feel about our, just thinking about how she has responded to them? Has she met it? And what are our concerns? What are some of the things that we are thinking that she has done really well with? What she has not done really well? Or vice versa, or whatever. Matthew?
With regard to Likert scale, I find Likert scales to be useful in context. The problem with Likert scales in the numerous studies that I've done. And the first time was just a shock to me that we had, it was an agricultural thing. What were your opinions about certain dairy pricing? Nothing to do with us. But I had people who would check number four and say X, and then somebody else who checked number four and say not X. And so without some qualitative data to support the quantitative accounting, I think they are very weak as a, as a statistical method, particularly when we've got, we're, we're talking about nine people. And for have any statistical significance in anything, you need at least 30, and even that's not ideal. So by itself, no Likert scale. If we want a Likert scale, some qualitative piece to go with it.
Thank you, Matthew. Any other comment about that? Dean?
Yeah, I'm with Matt. A lot of these things are, I mean, there's a drive to, you know, sort of almost automate as much of the process as possible to, to make it almost paint by numbers. It's less painful that way. We think we're narrowing the issues. But in fact, he's right, to some extent, the there are only nine of us and all you need is one little scooch, one way or the other on a, on a, you know, one, one item, it makes a big difference. So is that valid? So I have my, uh, my doubts about that.
And we didn't give her a score. We just kind of taught, we gave a narrative to her last year. So even, even use what we had and ours was not, was askew to the, the data as Matthew so more eloquently stated. Alright, I don't want to be labor, but what I'm hearing is that we will just write down our own thoughts about some, um, some of the goals that she has written. Your thoughts about it? Please, please do that. And then, when we come together, we will kind of discuss that in total. And come up with some ideas about the areas that we're, we're, we're amazed at and areas that we're amazed at and areas that we're not. So, you know, and all the above. So I think, um, I think that's where I would like to land on that, if that's okay.
May I add one more thing? Go ahead, Liz.
I just wanted to do a timetable.
Okay, I was going to get to it, but Matthew, let me answer Matthews and then I will end that about.
So let's say we're talking about bubble gum. How well the superintendent's done about bubble gum. And we've chatted about it. Would it be useful, and it is a sincere question, because I don't have a dog in this fight. Would it be useful after we've talked about the bubble gum, right, you know, aspect? To then say, do we have a sense of the group as to where we would put this on a Likert scale? But we've had, we first had the conversation, so everybody's had a chance to hear one another.
I think that we could talk about that once we have more data. Like how those conversations, but that's actually a really good question, Matthew. Oh, you've changed my, on the screen. Ah, this is so exhausting watching people move. Andrea?
In my discombobulated state, as you described it of the weekend, what Matthew said is what I was trying to say. Is that we have a conversation and then there's a, a value in saying, well, where, where, where would that fall? You know, is it an, is it an A, a B, a C, as it were?
Okay, and and that we may get to that and that that actually feels like that's a summation, right? Is we're talking about things and we, and we kind of sum up to that. So going back to a timetable, Liz, is I actually think that, um, Susan was actually looking to, um, go into executive, have us go into executive session next on the 17th. So we do it today is ours. And then on the 17th, we go into hers and we've had her stuff for a while. So I kind of thought it was plausible. Alright, does that, how's that timetable? Liz?
I'm, I'm not sure for myself personally. If I cannot make it, I will send you my comments.
That would be great. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Alright, so I'm going to move us on to our next agenda item. Rita, I have to say the background and sort of the, the, your, the clothing that you're wearing is very stately. I feel like you're about ready to give a presidential address.
Yeah, it's just a little black bathing suit cover up. Not that I have a bathing suit on. Thank you.
Kind of fun to think about that, actually. So, alright. So, but I just want to say, it really does, it, you really do look like, I feel like I'm about ready to like sit and listen to the presidential.
It's, it's the pearls.
Always with pearls. Alright, so, um, so the next part is, as, as we all know, Ted Kellher has taken a position on in the East Con. It's East Con, it's like a magnet school. And as a principal to a small thing. I know in years past, once again, we have done a principal's search in multiple different ways. Susan was really looking to make sure that we are really, that the search is really in depth. And so she actually, um, got Mary Broderick involved. And I think, have you guys seen, um, her, her process? I just want to add a side note is, I do know that she is visiting family right now, but I put down that I wanted to know where the board sits on her, on her, on her survey. Or she, she not survey, but when she meets. And so I haven't gotten back to her on that. So I just wanted to let you, and I don't know, Phil, if you have any more information about that.
I, I could try to fill in whatever, whatever blanks there might be. I can even, um, if it's okay, I'll share my screen and just show you guys a few things. If I'm able to, I think I'm able to. You guys see that?
Yep.
And maybe you've seen this stuff already. I'm not sure. I, I know an email just went out this afternoon. And I believe, uh, we're going to post this, CAEB is going to take this posting and, and you know, they have a far larger reach than we do. But the, this is what, uh, we did this in conjunction with, with Mary Broderick. Again, desired qualifications, you can read here. And again, you should have received this email this afternoon. And if you haven't, I could forward it to the board.
We didn't receive it. What we did receive is the survey monkey.
Okay, it should have been all in the same email where they had the link. And then two documents inside the email that you can click on and download, but it does take a couple steps. But this is what it looks like. You know, again, you know, one of the bottom pieces was the, the very last sentence, having previous experience as a principal or assistant principal, we thought was important. But again, not necessarily necessity, but something that we, these are all, none of these are absolute necessities, except of course, the O nine two certification. But I think more of general, you know, what we desire in a candidate. This talks about the application process. And, you know, where to go, CAEB.org. Leaves it open until August 7th. Obviously, it gives a little background of Fitch, about Groton, and about how to contact Dr. Broderick. The other parts of the email that went out. Just give me one sec. Can you see this now, the survey? Did that switch on your screen?
Yes.
This is what the survey looks like. Again, it, it has a number of different groups that you could check off that represent you. What do you consider to be the two most significant strengths of Fitch High? Two most important issues or challenges facing Fitch? What dimensions of this leadership are most important in the next principal? And you can, you can number them. And then you can also, these are personal qualities in the next principal. And if you do hit other, I believe it lets you fill in, fill in a blank space as to something that maybe isn't listed. Or maybe it takes you right down here to number six. It also lets people recommend, if you have somebody in mind, and you can share their name and contact information. And then any other issues, you know, so pretty, pretty standard. I've seen these before in different districts where we, where we've had a, a search like this. And then the other, maybe this is, this is another piece of it, the focus groups in survey. I know, uh, this is for the public, I think teachers, staff, parents, administrators, students. I know that she mentioned a board of ed focus group. So I'm not sure where that's going to, where that's going to land. But this is also something that went out today as well for people to sign up. They have access to the survey as well as the, the way to join the Zoom. And it looks like we're just going to stack them on the 25th and 26th. I think that was in an effort to move the process along. The initial timeline that she had, I think, brought us to an October 1 start for the, for the principal. We shared that we would love to have the person start by September 1. I think that's what's best for the building and, you know, what's best for a principal coming in. I think it would be very difficult to start on October 1, but, um, so I think, you know, she's worked with us in that and tried to, you know, she doesn't want to skip any steps, but maybe, I think in the past, those focus groups might have been more spaced out. Now we're going to get through them in two days, so maybe that will help us really step up the, the, the process. If she, if it's open until the 7th, I would assume that we'd have some kind of screening. I mean, it's, it really is going to be a tight window because we'd have to screen them and then set up the interviews and make it through the interview process. And then whoever that candidate might be, if they're an outsider, we'd have to allow for some type of time period from, from whatever district they might be coming with. If it's an internal candidate, that would make things easier. But my expectation is that we're going to, um, we're going to get a lot of interest for this job. But that's, that's sort of the conversations I've been involved in. It's really been about getting that posting together and out. And we, we did that just today. And that started last week, maybe Thursday, Friday. And, uh, we kind of solidified that today, got it out to everybody today. And we'll start collecting the data in the survey and, and hopefully put this, the focus groups together over the next couple of weeks. I'm, I'll probably, you know, Susan's away, Lori's away this week. So I'll be, um, you know, talking with Mary sometime this week in terms of what the next steps are. And once I get those, I'll pass them along.
Matthew?
A question for you, Phil. I'm speaking from a personal bias and nothing more than that. I noticed as far as the focus groups, that they are four selected groups, comma, and yet, not but, and yet, I would personally like to see a non-participate, non-participatory board presence at each of these focus groups. That doesn't mean that six or seven of us show up, but that at least one board member is present. Because if we're not careful, we might learn something that, you know, while nominally to do with a principal could also be very illuminative for us as board. So what do you think of the idea of allowing a board member and maybe different board members at different focus groups? But just to have some board member presence? Shouldn't be one person at all the groups?
Yeah, um, I don't know. And again, I would probably defer to Mary and see what she's done in the past. It would just be sort of as an, you know, this would be in, not in lieu of a board of ed focus group, though.
Exactly.
You would want your chance to talk with her and, and share your opinions, but it would just be sort of a way to hear what people are saying.
As usual, you understand correctly.
I, I, my only concern about that, Matthew, is that specifically for some of the groups, we are sort of the boss's boss. Our bosses, bosses, you know what I mean? And there, we could stymie people's conversation. What I would like, though, to your point, is I would love to hear an overview. I would like, first of all, I would like for us to be a focus group. And I have sent her an email to that specifically. And second, I know, and Matthew, you were not part of that, but for those of us who were, we actually, Mary actually gave us a broad stroke of what the focus groups were coming up when we were looking for a superintendent. And that was actually very illuminating because there are some things that we didn't know people were concerned about. And then there was other things that they, that they, that they, that we were actually in agreement and we didn't know that we were in agreement. But I, I myself am not, and I'm just one board member. So if other people feel differently, I, I am not, I'm not in favor of us sitting in a focus group. Because I think by our presence, we become, we, we taint a process. But I would love to hear about the overall themes that, that develop. And Mary's really good about develop, about giving us that.
Well, I, I defer to your judgment. My thought, you know, as I looked at the list, I could see some focus groups that it might be, it might be more appropriate for a board member to be present at X and might be more appropriate not to be present at Y focus group. So I was particularly interested in what parents were saying. That's, that's the one that was most important for me. And again, as a non-participatory presence, to be very clear that that's the board member would not participate in the focus group discussion.
I want to recognize you, but my only comment to that is that by us being there, we, we become participatory. Liz?
As you will, as you will, I trust your judgment.
Liz and then Rita. Thank you, Matthew.
Phil, I just wanted to tell you, I didn't get that email.
Nor did I.
Okay, I haven't received, I haven't got. I was, I'm just now looking and I don't have.
I don't think Dean did as well. I mean, I think most of us.
It went out, it's, it went out at 6:00, but I will forward it right now.
Alright. Hopefully, we won't look at it until after the meeting, folks. Rita, did you have something?
Yes, I, I, um, you know, I, I felt last time, it was over the summer when, when a, a principal was selected for Fitch High School. I wasn't on that committee that selected him with Dr. Grenier. But I felt it was rushed and I know, Phil, that September 1st would be great. But I would rather get the right candidate and take our time.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I, I definitely don't want to rush the process and cut corners because it's too.
I mean, even if, you know, someone had to fill in for a couple of months, it's alright, because it does take time for someone to sort of, you know, if they're coming from another district, another state. I just want the best candidate because we've had some not so good candidates. I mean, you know, principals in the past. So it, it's such an important role in, in our, so there's just some things that I feel we should take our time with.
Absolutely. I think that could be part of the discussion is to, you know, and we already did sort of throw that out there in terms of what that would look like. Would the, you know, would the three assistants sort of step up or would we want to put somebody in there, you know?
Usually one of the assistants. Yeah. And my other question is, are you advertising in the national papers like the New York Times? Or are you going just with like the CAEB educational things?
I'll have to ask Mary. She, she. Where, so where are we, where are we posting?
Right, it's very important that it's more of an, of a national search as opposed to, you know, very local. And just in the CAEB educational reach. So that's my feeling.
Thank you, Rita. I'm going to recognize Jay and then Dean.
Uh, yes, so the email that Phil's referring to came from the school messenger system. So it, it drops into your other tab rather than your focus tab. That's where I found it. So if you guys look there, and also, Matthew was saying that an agenda didn't go out. That also went out through the email. I know that a lot of people depend on paper, but the email has always the most up to date. But I'm wondering if everybody's getting their emails. As it does seem like there's a lot of missing emails, maybe since we went over to the server based, but, you know, that did go out.
I, um, and I did, I did see that. Thank you. It is in the other. Thank you, Jay. Dean?
Following up on what Matthew said, um, I've been thinking about, you know, the board presence, some board presence, actually, board member presence at the other focus groups. I'm not sure that we would necessarily stifle a conversation by the, by the people who are the, who are in the focus group. I think it's rather the other way around. I think that if, when people think about a board of ed, not just ours, but other boards of ed, they sometimes think of them, or very often think of them as maybe not as plugged in as they ought to be. That's kind of one of the main critiques that I've heard from people. Do you guys know what's going on? Are you in control of anything? What's, is the, you know, they view the administration, if there's an evil, if you will. They view the administration as the source of the troubles and the board is sort of, sort of disconnected. So I think presence of a board member, rather than stifling conversation, would please the other participants, teachers and parents and say, oh, look, there's a board member. They're involved.
Yep. Alright, any?
I agree with Dean that, and Matthew, I don't think it would stifle it. And I think what Dean said, it would give it a statement of, of interest and faith in the group. That's where we would be involved.
So how about if we do this? How about if that question gets posed to Mary? And we see Mary, who has done multiple focus groups for very different positions in different districts about what she is saying about that. And then we can land on that. Because not all of us are going to be available anyways during those time periods. William?
Um, yeah, so have we been involved when we are interviewing, when they're interviewing teachers? When they're interviewing, you know, counselors or anything like that? I mean, is the board involved in any of that as well?
So we tend to be involved in the, um, the places and spaces that are, um, that are important. So obviously, the superintendent administration, so that, that's where that falls. Is that we tend to be involved in that. It's, once again, we have not, and we have not used Mary for this search. I just think that Susan sees this as a, as a, as an opportunity. Ted was fine, like, I'm not at all, because I, I, he was very, think about all the work that he's done with the board and, and his accomplishments that he has done. But we just need to make sure that we've got the right person in, in the, in, in that job. It's our flagship school, as we say, um, say. And so I think that we will be having some board involvement. I'm not quite sure where that does. I know that there were some people who are in the, for Ted, they were in the lower end part of the interviews. And when it became one or two, I know that I hopped in and was part of the interview process at the end as the, as the board chair. So William, I don't know if that answers your question, but. Um, so William, I don't know if that answers your question, but yeah, when it's in the more of the higher echelons of the of the administration. We tend to be, um, we we tend to be part of that. Liz, and then I'm gonna recognize Rita.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, in terms of process. I know I've been on a a whole lot of different hiring committees for staff. And the uh process has always been you send two forward. I'm wondering if that. You know, I I really, in this respect, if if that committee that chooses. Their candidate for this principal, I I really believe that we need to go and focus on. One person and have a second in the background in case. But I I'm all for just sending forward one person for the superintendent's approval. Not two, and then, you know, because that committee may want this person and then. This person really, and then the other person is like, well, if that one doesn't want it, then this one, and that doesn't always come across. And I just want us to consider that or just to hear my my idea. Because um it's happened on a number of occasions that I've been involved in. Where the person that we primarily wanted to have. Did not get it, even though we said, this is the person we want and it was. That's not the person they wanted, so I just wanted to to throw that out, because this is such. An essential position, I can't tell you what I've been hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Liz, um Rita.
Um, I just wanted to to ask, I have two questions, one is what the cost is. Costing the Board of Education to hire um Cave to do this search. Because we weren't a asked, you know, we were never given any numbers, do we want to do this and how is expensive is it? And my second, I just wanted to let the board know at one time. Each board member had an adoptive school. And you went to the interviews for hiring at your adopted school. So let's say for a while, I was Northeast Academy. And then um Fitch High School, sometimes you have two, depending on what people could could do. And you went to those, um I I would love to have those adoptive schools back in 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 the future. I think as a board, it was very beneficial, you went to the PTO meetings, you went to the concerts at that school. You were mu- much more involved. And um people like sort of selected the school that was near their house or, you know, that they were interested in. But just going forward as the board, since I won't be here and after December. That it's something for the new board to consider. So but I would like the cost of how much it's costing.
So um I I have a concern, Rita, I I actually asked that question when I met with Susan before she went on break. And it's um nine thousand and I do not write down, now, that's actually doesn't feel like a bad cost for me in terms of the work that she's doing. And bringing forward someone, and I do believe that it is a line item that's in her budget and it was um gone through by Ken. So that's, so that's what it is, and I will um make note that she gives us that information.
Whose budget, Susan's budget?
Yeah, the, yeah, her on on her section, once again, let me find, let me find out, don't go on that, let me find out what what line item that came from, okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely, William, did you have any further comment?
No.
Okay, great. Any further conversation around this um the principal search? Once again, I just wanted to make sure everyone um was made aware of what what was happening. Um, and and so, okay, great, and that it's.
Could I, could I just thank Phil, I don't know, maybe I'm not thanking Phil, whoever it was.
Feel free to thank me, that's okay.
Okay, I won't, I think whoever it was who put is the first item we were looking for. Is what we wanted the outcomes to be, what vision we had for the student who for our graduates as graduates. I think that is capital and whoever did it, kudos.
Yeah, again, it was it was our whole um administrative team up there as we, you know, me, Lori. Um, Susan and Mary sort of put our heads together uh for the posting.
I appreciate what you do.
And I did forward that along, I know we found it in our other mailboxes, but I did forward it along to the board um email as well.
And I guess that's um actually just moving forward, that might be really good information for people to have, Phil. Is I don't know how you make it so it's put into our focused mails, just because um, I I don't know. I'm not as, I'm not as tech smart as I hoped I would be at this point in my life.
Well, it's 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 worth looking into, because especially as we switch over from school manager to parent square. Um, it's gonna be important to make sure. That it goes to that that board email, so what what email did it go to, then you're that north? I'm sorry.
So in our outlook, we have, um, oh gosh, Jay, help me out, um, we have the focused and then there's the.
Other. Yeah, and so Outlook uses a rule, an algorithm, it looked at this and said, oh, this is a, this is coming from a list, this is coming from school messenger. And so it determined it's kind of spam, so it threw it into other. Versus emails that go directly to our email from our domain are considered focused, so.
Gotcha.
But I'm sure that IT could explain this much better than I did.
Yeah, I'll check with them tomorrow.
It it's what Jay said. Liz.
Um, Phil, just um if it came to our other box and you know, I wouldn't have thought to look there, to tell you the truth. I only check other once every couple of weeks or months. And if people who are involved in this thing, the teachers, the parents, the stu. You know, those, all those essential personnel, maybe an email needs to go out from your office to all of these groups that say. You know, to the teachers, look in the other box, or here's the new, the link, because if they don't see it, they're not, this is summer. They're not gonna go look, you know?
I also think it's gonna, Liz, it's gonna have to be a phone call, because there's many people that don't look at their Groton email.
Well, maybe it needs to be a phone call, I think it's really important and I think we need to communicate how the importance of this to our staff, especially.
Hmm, I think it should be in the day. That this is going now. Oh, that there's gonna be a survey monkey and to alert the town to see, you know, either. Call the board of ed, I mean, call the central office if they can't log into it or I think it should be a more public notice.
Yeah, and we'll get it on our Facebook, you know, all that too, and and make sure people are getting it out.
And on the school websites.
Yeah.
And the sports team website, you know? Everything, blanket it.
Thank you. No, thank you, that's why we're talking about it, right? Um, and so and our last part of this um heading is um on on August fourteenth. Um, which is a regular cow, excuse me, committee of the whole um. Scheduled meeting, but instead of having a meeting, we are going to have a board retreat, it's gonna be somewhat of the completion of the work that we do with Mary. In last year, um, it is going to be at central office, um, so that for people who need to be. Um, remote can be can be remote, but still be part of of the conversation. Um, uh, we are going to be fed, um, and Mary will be giving us more information as it gets closer. But even though many of us are not going to be on the board post um the end of November. Um, because the new board gets sworn in in December, um, we still, I still feel like it's really important just to kind of like. Um, just kind of solidify the stuff that we believe that's been so important of the sport, so the legacy can kind of continue. So I don't, I would love, I love for people to, um, even though you may or may not be running to consider to um to be part of this really vital process. Um, we learn a lot about our functioning and we learn about a lot about lots of stuff. So I just wanted to throw that out um as the as our retreat. Alright. I would um entertain a motion to go into um executive session.
So.
Can I have a second? I have a second, I have Rita seconding. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 There's no, there's no objection, alright?